Oh, my God. You're such a pouty here.
That's right. I'm 93.4% sure. I like it. I'm not very interested in this country.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Thank you. Mr. Steiger?
Here.
Mr. Ma?
Here.
Ms. Dorn?
Here.
Mr. Frazier?
Yes.
Mr. Patafina?
Ms. Julia?
The FEMA.
We have seven members present.
Thank you, Senator. I have a couple of announcements to make. First of all, before we get started, I want to take a moment to remind the members of the public or district committees that it is important that our meetings be held without any unnecessary interruptions. So I would ask that if you have a cell phone, you turn it off or turn on the vibrator and if there are any awful comments or conversation unless you are recognized to address the council regarding an item on your agenda. The city attorney has informed me that any action that disrupts the council meeting can be considered a violation of state law and state order and a pressing cause of disturbance can be required for meetings. So I would like to come up with something. The council and mayor would appreciate everyone using common service tonight and allowing our meetings to hold in a businesslike manner. And I would also like to add that it is our order for, once the meeting has been called to order, for anyone in the audience to approach the table and approach council members or pass notes to them. Any communication that you want the council members to have before the meeting should be given to the clerk or to individual council members before they come to the table. So I'd appreciate if that would be followed, otherwise there is a violation of our process and this is a business meeting. The second announcement, council, we have a number of changes to the order of the agenda tonight for several reasons. It's hard as ever for the current administration and the order is just going to know and put the number noticeions if you would like. First item is going to be, it will remain as it is, the partial redemption of Rummel Relief's drainage district authorization. The second item will be Mr. Crowe, just going to talk about the public hearing notice follow-up. Third item will be Mr. Sharetz and his budget presentation. Fourth item will be neighborhood stabilization, Mr. Dorn. Number five will be communications. Number six will be the FEMA grant. Number seven is the receipt of this. Number three will be number seven, we've been... Number eight will be number six, the community. Do you need me to go over any of that? She's giving the numbers. Number one becomes five. Communications becomes five under the... Number one remains as number one. Number two becomes number six. Number three becomes seven. Number four becomes three. I'm sorry, two. Number four becomes three. Number five becomes two. Number six becomes eight.
Number four's four.
Four's four.
Four stays four.
Four stays four.
Right. Right. Thank you.
Number four and one?
Five is two, eight is six. Six is eight and seven is three.
Right. Got it. So we said we changed it twice. It got worse than we wanted. All right. Mr. ... The first thing that we're going to be...
I'll take this briefly. Madam President, Council, what we have here is a request for approval of the partial redemption of the Rummel Relief Drainage District signs. We're just looking for consensus as we go on the meeting. Senate Agenda, February 13th. What you have in your packet, council, is exactly what you will see. This is a draft of the February 13th item. We have your staff. We have Lee Schultz there, who was lead. Will handle any geophysical issues or anything having to do with the Rummel Relief Drainage Project. If there are any questions there. And we have bond counsel, Michael McGee of Miller Cantfield, here to help us understand and get a comfort level with the resolution that is provided to accomplish this refunding. Purpose of the refunding is for the city to save money and interest due to the differential between the rates that the bonds were initially sold at versus the record low interest rates that we are experiencing in the economy today. So with that, Mr. McGee?
Thank you, Mr. Sharetz. For the record, Mike McGee, Miller Cantfield, Pat E. Stone, 150 West Jefferson, we turn Michigan 4226. We turned Mr. Sharetz into a bond lawyer because he's described the issue very succinctly. There's a little bit of money left over from this project. There's an opportunity to reduce the outstanding amount of the debt somewhat. The Water Resources Commission, which acts as administrator for the drainage districts, has recommended that, and we concur. The debt service payments will be reduced a little, not a lot, but some. And this is actually a relative matter for what you do when you have a little bit of money left over at the end of the project. Happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Frazier?
Would we look at the ones that are the highest interest rates first?
Yes, sir. The last ones, which are the highest interest rates, one will be paid off, which also saves the greatest amount of interest. So the actual, not only will the effective rate come down a little bit, the term of the loan is being shortened by a year.
Okay. Thanks.
Anyone else?
Thank you very much.
Do we need a consensus to put this on the agenda?
The 13th of February.
Would you like to? Mr. Lance?
Yes.
Yes.
I got that.
I might add that the fact that I compare some of your stuff with me, I understand that must be true. So I'm glad you're here. I'm here for the reputation of the firm. Seeing all the approvals, very much appreciated.
Excuse me. Mr. Crowley?
Good to hear. As I had stated last week, when there were some questions raised regarding the legality of the public hearing notices and the public hearing itself, so that we would investigate and report back to the council tonight, I have conferred with the city attorney and the city clerk, and we feel confident that we follow proper procedures and that the public hearing notices are legal and valid for the following reasons. State law requires four items to be included in the public hearing notices. One, describing the nature of the request. Two, indicate the property that is the subject of the request, state when and where the request will be considered, and indicate when and where written comments will be received. We went back several months and verified that all the planning commission public hearing notices and the city council notices comply with those four fundamental requirements. Now, that's not to say that there was not some technical oversight with some subsections that were referenced in the introductory paragraph. The clerk's office, the city attorney, and myself have reviewed that introductory paragraph, and we're going to clean that up and streamline it in the future so that those errors aren't made. Secondly, with regards to the amount of time for the notification, back in 2006, Public Act 110 was amended and changed the notification requirements from a minimum of five days, maximum of 15, to at least 15 days. And the planning department has been complying with those state requirements since 2006. The ordinance itself, the subsection that talks about notices, was never updated and amended to reflect the new state law. So moving forward, the planning and legal departments will draft an amendment to the zoning ordinance for your consideration to update the specific section of the ordinance dealing with public notices. And we reviewed the four public hearings at the council, and in this case, the public hearing notices complied with both the city and state requirements. So we feel pretty confident that the two that were acted on and the two that will be coming back on the 13th have been all correctly notified and are valid, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that the council might have at this time.
Mr. Ma?
Yeah, I just have a few questions. So as we approach our next regular council meeting, what's, I guess, what's the procedure moving forward? We just have to notice again for those... We have four public hearings, so the first two go forward as we approved of them.
Yes.
And then we reopen the third one, but we would have to notice it correctly?
Well, we postponed both of those public hearings. One was kind of in the middle of the public hearing, and the second one we never even opened, but both of those public hearings were postponed to a date certain.
Okay.
And so now those will just be back in front of you on the 13th. We'll continue the public hearing on the 1st, and we will open the second one and go through a public hearing on the 11th.
Do we need to re-notice any date?
No, because we did. We postponed to a date certain.
And then my second question is, can someone let Mr. Mullen know this information? Oh, here. Oh, perfect. Okay. There you go. That's all.
My question is, can I answer? I want to...
The paragraph that included sections in the one you really work, me, those does not have to be re-advertized, but you keep that and maintain that same language?
You mean for the future?
For the one that has, though, even use. Is that an error?
Are you talking about the five to 15 days?
No, no. Well, the section, the third graph...
Oh, so very top. Yep, there are four. Five of them.
The third graph, which refers to section, whatever it is.
Right. To the chair, if I could just kind of... The law requires that you give the person that's receiving the notice an opportunity to know what meeting is at, what's the council going to consider, what's the address, you know, what use is it now? So all of those parameters in our notices were absolutely correct. Everything was right in there in terms of, this was, for example, the one that we kind of stopped within. That was an OS district. It said that. It said it was a special use request. It said the address. The only technical defect in there was that if you look at the introductory paragraph, it cited an incorrect section of the zoning ordinance. It didn't cite a special use procedure in an OS. It cited in, I believe, a D3D. But again, if you look at the law, it's very clear what the notice is intended to do. So since the real meat of the notice says exactly correctly what we were doing, I do not believe that that minor defect in the top paragraph invalidates that notice. A reader who is going through this notice knew exactly what was before council that night.
As long as it covers the foreclosed?
Exactly. But again, we are going to track in the future.
The Chair, we're just going to reference the zoning ordinance as the umbrella and not get into the subsections.
Right.
And we think that will streamline the clarification.
I want to make sure that we make it clear to the viewing audience next week exactly we did it right and that the, it's not out there that we did anything wrong, but that we did well.
Through the Chair, when that item comes up, I'd be happy to restate these items.
We'll go through that. Right. Absolutely. You want?
Thank you very much.
Mr. Sharetz?
Yes. It's a major pressure here. It's taking work. Well, good. Let's favor one.
Mr. Morgan?
Two minutes.
One minute. You'd like to pick up any of that?
Pardon me?
Do I have to?
Yeah, it'd be a good idea. I want to start by giving you a corrected copy. I had 2011. You should give that for the record. I had 2011. I think it was because we had more money that year to work with, so I was just, yeah, wishful thinking. Let's get these going. Actually, both of these are the three. How the lighter too, or is this possible? Budget preview, the first of a series of opportunities for us to work together on the budget for 2012-13. Normally, each January, we start officially the budget process with the city council. We've already began technical work on the budget several weeks ago, but that's just to get started, to get the process all set up. But this begins the policy discussions, focusing on the long-term sustainability of the city of Southfield as a vibrant municipal entity. First things first, no kicking the can down the road, no quick fixes. We will tackle our fiscal responsibilities head-on. Major word is uncertainty, and the challenges loom large. Examples, tax-based valuation challenges. Our tax base in totality has dropped 31% in the last three years and is projected to drop next year, the year we're talking about, all 13, and the year beyond that. Hopefully, the sustainability or growth will begin. Commercial appeals and office vacancies remain a problem and remain a challenge. Foreclosures. Realty Trek has provided information on the third quarter of 2011, and foreclosures were up 6% in the state of Michigan. Personal property. There is a legislative push in many quarters that puts personal property at some risk, some substantial risk possibly. Personal property, of course, is the machinery and equipment that businesses use to produce income. That would involve for the city of Southfield $8.9 million annually across all funds, $392.4 million taxable value, and represents 14.6% of the total tax base. Proposal A in WPW. WPW, once reduced, always reduced. We have had substantial discussions on this, and we are hoping in the future for relief, but this is the state of the law at this point. It has been for some time. Unemployment. If you look at the green handout that was just passed out by the city clerk, you will see the list of unemployment by state, and the state of Michigan is 41st on the list, I believe. I didn't end up with one. And 41st, okay? And you'll see that it starts at 3.3, isn't it? 3.3 with North Dakota. If you want a little bit warmer climate, South Dakota is 4.2. And we're 11th, the state of Michigan's 11th from the bottom of the list, and it ends up at Nevada, which is 12.6%. State of Michigan is at 9.3. That is progress. It's getting lower, but we all know that there are issues in how unemployment statistics are kept and that the general consensus is that it's a low count. And we need to keep in mind that in general, in recent history, the unemployment rate in the city of Southfield has been around 1 half percent higher than the state as a whole. So many of our residents are hurting. Bottom line, several of the elements we're dealing with have not improved much, if any, over the past year, and some have gotten worse. Oops, run away. That's better. What do we have going for us? We have proven our commitment and credibility. We've demonstrated our commitment to long-term sustainability of the city by our strict adherence to the long-term financial plan. We've been on a diet since 2004, '05, and basically the fruit plate has become our dessert. Disciplined funding of property valuation appeals. We have taken the advice of our, both our auditors as well as our independent counsel in matters of property tax appeals, and we have funded what is believed to be our ultimate liability in a proper manner. And when Standard and Poor's was looking at us recently, that's one of the things that they were impressed with. We have maintained service levels while reducing staff by over 200 FTEs, or full-time equivalent positions, or about 25% without layoffs. We have conducted a disciplined managed attrition program achieved over the last eight years. Employees have stepped up, stepped up big time. Job descriptions and work processes have been reconfigured. Technological improvements have been implemented. Standard and Poor's would not have reconfirmed our AA, which is the top quartile bond rating for all public agencies rated in the state of Michigan by Standard and Poor's, if we had not demonstrated that we were heading in the right direction. We're staying the course, going forward. Those without saying, we take no great joy in saying this, but concessions are an absolute necessity. Everybody participates, case closed. Layoffs continue to be a last resort. Every layoff is a potential family disaster in these times. We have been consistently committed and continue to be committed to reducing the misery index, not adding to it if possible. Layoffs continue to be a last resort. Due to this current economic uncertainty, all acting positions are on hold until the fiscal situation is clarified and all search processes for vacant positions are suspended. In the coming weeks, city staff along with mayor and city council will be heavily involved in budgetary matters. Here are the key 2012-13 budget preparation and adoption process dates. The budget is submitted to the mayor on or before April 1st. On April 14th, the assessor submits the state equalized valuation and taxable value figures to the county. On the 23rd, the county will issue their SEV and taxable figures and their review findings. On May 7th, the mayor submits the budget to council. On May 21st, the council budget study session takes place. Any, there can be obviously other sessions scheduled in here, and there will be, but these are the mandated schedules per either charter or per our schedule of meetings that was recently adopted by city council. On the 29th, the state issues final SEV and taxable value figures. Up to that point, everything that we're doing on the budget is based on projections and estimates. On the 29th, it becomes more scientific. So what happens when we get those numbers is we go back to work and rework all of the revenue figures to make sure they exactly match what the taxable value figures are for the year. So when we go into the budget fiscal year, we know precisely what we will realize in taxable values as far as what is approved by the state and what our collections will be. On the June 3rd, the budget hearing notice is published. On the 18th, the special budget adoption meeting is held at 6:30 PM, and on July 1st, the fiscal year will begin. This concludes our initial preview update. There will be much more as the process progresses. Deputy City Administrator Fred Zorn will follow with an overview of our efforts to fight the foreclosure crisis that we talked about earlier through federally funded neighborhood stabilization programs. More to follow. Thank you very much for your time and attention.
I just thought I'd bring some water.
I'm glad I wanted to bring some water.
Thank you, Madam President, and to the Ottawa council. Tonight, I'd like to introduce our NSP staff, and during that process, we also have some items you'd like to hand out. With me tonight, we have Erica Williams, who is within the city's housing department and administers the city's community development block grant, the neighborhood stabilization program. Is a subcomponent of the community development block grant program. Also with us is Diana Pegler, who's in the trenches of NSP relative to client relations and helping people obtain mortgages and closing. And then last but not least is Scott Habauski, who is, for All Practical Matters, our accountant as well as production manager for the program. Do you guys want to hand... Have you already handed out those items, or?
Yeah.
Okay. As, on February 13th, we will be asking city council to conduct a public hearing to hear comment regarding proposed amendments to our NSP 3 program. At council's request, several weeks ago, there was a desire to get an update on NSP 1 program, and that's our primary objective here this evening. Just kind of... 1 program, and that's our primary objective here this evening. Just kind of walk council through. NSP program, unlike other HUD programs, goes and deals with incomes up to 120 percent of the area median income. Most HUD programs deal between our, our typical CDVG program deals below 80 percent and often goes 50 and 30 percent. These are the incomes. To tell you, these numbers change monthly. Staff is updating these as we get them from HUD. Kind of walk you through, one person, $23,250. Four-person household income can go as high as $79,680. I think these are numbers council has seen before. NSP 1 was $3.2 million. We allocated $810,400 to what is referred to as a 25 percent set aside. That is the low-income group. In other words, folks who are in this income column are eligible to get this bucket of money, the $810,000. Here's our scorecard to date. Activity 1, the 25 percent set aside. Six families who are classified as low-income have been assisted. One home rehabilitation is in progress. The Growth Corporation has acquired 16 speculative homes, of which at least seven will be targeted towards low-income families. We don't always know who's going to end up with the home because it's driven by the income's family. You may have a home that staff might have felt was an activity 2, which I'll be discussing in a moment, which will, ended up being bought by a low-income family. So that accounting is always a fluid item for us. The Growth Corporation is in active discussions with Habitat for Humanity out of Oakland County for the purpose of developing four of the seven speculative homes. And we've had dialogues with two other Oakland County-based nonprofit groups, all of which will be bringing talent, resources, and some financial resources to our program. NSP Activity 2 is $1.6 million. This has been the most popular piece of our program. Within our original plan, we had anticipated 20 housing units. To date, 13 families whose incomes are either low to moderate or moderate to middle income have been assisted. Assistance to five families is pending. And again, we have 16 speculative homes. We believe at least seven of those homes will go to low-income families, possibly nine or slightly fewer will go towards this group. The amendment that we're asking council to consider on February 13th, which is currently out for public comment and will be out to public comment on the month of February 6th, will allow us to use NSP 3 funds to complete the renovation of NSP 1 homes located in the NSP 3 target area. And I'll walk you through that in a moment. The city was entitled to 10 percent of the grant for administrative, which was $324,000. Activity 4, we budgeted $87,304.44, and that was to acquire properties near public properties, to which we've acquired three properties and tore them down. Two of those property homes, properties are subject to, are adjacent to Horse Tail Woods. The other is adjacent to, Scott, Bryce Park?
The Southfield Academic Institute?
Yes.
It's one of them.
All of the properties have demolished and cleared. They all have bought public spaces. They've been cleared for green space expansion. Activity 5, we allocated $356,911 for the purpose of providing down payment assistance and/or closing costs. This assistance can come in the form of a grant, deferred loan, or reduced interest rates. At closing, we record these loans as soft seconds depending upon the income. They may be waived upon staying in the home for a certain period of time. If you're moderate to middle income, 100 percent of that loan is paid, must be paid back at whichever time you sell the home. If you're low to moderate income, 50 percent must be paid back upon sale and upon staying in the house, Diane, at 10 years? It's 10 years. Activity 5, 36 families from all income levels have been assisted. We currently have another 40 families on our waiting list. Wanted to go through, here's what the grant amounts, 810,000 Activity 1, 1.62 was the final number for Activity 2, Activity 3, and there's our 3.2457. Activities drawn down. To date, Activity 1 is drawn down 281,1175. To date, I should say, this is as of December 31st, 2011. Activity 2, we've drawn down the full grant amount. Activity 4, we've drawn down 43,237. Activity 5, we've drawn down 101,212.44. Remaining funds to be drawn down, these are the balances of the funds that we work with. In a moment, I'm going to talk about our program income. Once we have program income, we cannot draw down our balance fund until we've completed the, until we've expensed our program income. So these are our balances to draw down. So we've got roughly another $937,000 coming from HUD, from NSP 1. And then, program income by activity. We've had $1.2 million come in in program income, and that money is dispersed and goes back into the program as well, of which we do take 10 percent for administration. So this number here, the admin number, which was the 324, will increase by 10 percent or another $120,000. So roughly to date, we've earned program administrative fees of $454,000. These are the expenses by activity. So far, for Activity 1, we spent $246,000. Activity 2, $2.6 million. Activity 3, this is what we've spent. There's another piece, the other number, to date, we've added $250,000 for staff and wages. This is what's been ran through NSP. That's one of the final remaining pieces I need, exactly what we charged the program for, for staff salaries. So for purposes of what we presented earlier, we used a plug figure and added another $250 to that. So, Activity 5, we spent $257,532. I wanted to show this slide because this is property maintenance, property taxes, utilities. These are expenses that we've incurred in the program to date. This is a map of all the NSP properties we've impacted, and you can see the dots are pretty much throughout the city. All right, NSP 3. NSP 1 was the entire city. NSP 3 is this blue shaded area. HUD would not let the entire city be qualified this time. Of these 18 properties here, three of these actually have pending purchase agreements on them. We're proposing to use our NSP 3 funds to complete the renovation of different properties in this blue area. Our remaining NSP 1 funds will be used to complete the other homes outside of that target area. When we submitted the plan, staff would argue that our language was sufficient. Upon review of HUD, they came back and said, "Make it explicitly clear." So when you see the amendment, you'll see it's all italicized that we clearly state it's our intent to use NSP 3 funds to complete the renovation of NSP 1 homes. Activity, or NSP 3, the grant amount that we've been approved for is $1 million, $84,254. We have Activity 1, which is again our 25 percent set aside. So $271,000 must be used to provide housing for families whose income levels are below the 50 percent threshold. Activity 2, we actually put another $162,000. Activity 3, and in the amendment, this money will be moved into here. This is what we originally submitted, $542,000. Activity 4, and I know the numbers are slightly different if I were to redo this. Activity 3 in the NSP 1 was our administrative fees. Our Activity 4 administration is there's another $108,425 coming in in admin fees. So to date, you've had $454,000 come in from NSP 1, and you'll have another administrative fees of another $100,008. And that's what's paying your staff and your wages to complete this program. On February 13th, we're asking for council to conduct a public hearing. And upon conducting the public hearing, we'll be asking council to approve the CDVG NSP plan amendment. Erica, have we received any comment to date on the plan?
Not to date.
We received just one today from the Opportunity Fund that came a little after 5. It was very complimentary. Rita Hillman, who's on the Southfield Housing Commission and with the Opportunity Fund, has reviewed the amendments and is in favor of what we're doing. And actually, that organization has offered to partner with us on some mortgages. Madam President, if I could just ask my staff, is there anything you folks want to comment on? Diana, you've got a flow chart. We can pass that out. I can go in-depth through a process, or we're happy to do that one-on-one if council so This program is very much a fluid program. It is constantly changing. These are flow charts that were developed as part of the submittal of our management These are some, just photos of our NSP homes. Give you a little bit flavor of some of the properties we've worked on. Some we've acquired, some we've just provided down payment assistance to. Some are still works in progress. Madam President, happy to answer any questions.
Fred, when we started down this project, I guess it's been over two years ago, we had a discussion at the time about who would be the decision maker on who gets assistance in the program. And I thought it was a good decision that it not be the council decision that we not be involved in that. However, I would like to see the names of the people that have been assisted by this program. And there's been various rumors and things said, so I think in just transparency, we can have a list?
We'll make that available to council. I will make this statement that with most HUD programs and the income eligibility, you try to protect the financial information of your client, be it Section 8, clients are receiving assistance through the SHIP program, but we're happy to provide those names and addresses to council. I would really encourage discretion.
I'd be happy to give you the list back after I look at it.
Sure.
It's not something I want, but I'd like to see.
Certainly.
My next question is, are there any defaults for people that are, that have been delighted to participate? Is everybody living up to?
We have a number, in September of 2010, we did a number of land contracts. And at that time, markets were changing very dramatically and the ability for people to put financing. So we put in place land contracts, but yes, we have had defaults in land contracts, and that will be noted in those. And we have removed a family from an NSP home.
And what happens when they default?
Well, in the case of the land contract, we take possession or take the home back. We've not had any defaults on the mortgage end. In the case that comes to my mind immediately is that they weren't able to get a mortgage, they weren't able to fulfill the terms of the land contract, so they have been defaulted.
All right, but is there, then there's got to be some negative financial impact to the NSP program when this happens?
Well, I would say in the case of the one property where we did have to default, the home's been broken into a number of times. So yes, there is a negative impact. It's one more property that we thought we had committed, had under contract, and we weren't able to consummate a mortgage. But the thing to do for the program, though, is take the property back and get it back in the market. That home upon the departure of the family was turnkey ready. What's happened now is a major setback.
Well, and I'm a, my intent is not to be critical. It's...
I certainly don't take your comments as critic, this is a complex program.
I mean, I would think you'd, I just want to know the degree of long-term success. That's really where I'm going. I would suspect that anybody who does a program like this would probably, you know, life happens to people, and somebody may not...
When a client passes away after we made an offer on his behalf. Life happens.
Yeah. All right, well, thank you.
Yeah, a couple of questions. You know, I was away for a couple of years. Tell me about the Southfield Growth Corporation, how that was formed?
Within our NSP plan, we actually looked at either the housing commission or the establishment of a nonprofit to administer the program. It was meant to take a housing component of it out of the council's hand. And I'll cite the Housing Facilities Act, public act 181933, which allowed housing commissions to be created as well as housing commissions to create nonprofits. And it was meant to buffer the housing decision and the mortgage and the awkward decisions that had to be made. It would be very difficult for this public body to have to go through an eviction, to have to go through a number of these processes. That's why our model was that we would have a nonprofit, and it's a wholly controlled nonprofit with the board of directors being comprised of staff of individuals by virtue of the office or the management position they hold with the city.
Now, how do you determine which homes will be purchased against the criteria?
Initially, initially, the homes that were bought were bought where the end user, the end buyer, selected the home. They came in with a mortgage-ready letter, and I'll be blunt with council. We have learned that those letters aren't always worth what they're written on, and you could read all the qualifiers and have a deal go south on you two days before or the morning before you think you got a closing. We've had that happen. So people come through, they go through a general orientation, they come in with a mortgage commitment, they have to attend an eight-hour HUD class by a certified HUD counseling entity. Staff meets with them. At this point, Diana Pegler would meet with them. She would enter into a commitment letter with them that we'd be willing to pursue making an offer on their behalf or procuring a home on their behalf. What we also do is call the... What we also do is called a P calculation, principal, interest, taxes, and interest. And within those calculations, we look at their annual income for the last two years, and it's thirty percent. We try to keep everyone within that thirty percent of their monthly income on that home. And that's, those can be complex. Things change with income, although that has not been the reason why we've had deals go south, per se. The other item that's unique with the program, that the first homes, we had the end buyers. And that was candidly the strength of our program. Other programs across the state, we are by far exceeding most communities, we're further ahead than most communities in placing families in homes. What made our program work was that the end buyer was selecting the home. Speculative homes was not a position we wanted to be in. The issue we had, though, was we had to have our funds obligated by, Erica, September thirtieth, twenty-nine or ten?
Twenty-ten.
Twenty-ten. So in having those funds obligated, we went out and we made some speculative purchases. Our Activity One, that low-income set aside, we bought some very modest homes, primarily in the Twelve Mile, Greenfield, Cattelpa, to Southfield area, that we thought would be ideally suitable for a low-income family, get principles of homeownership and such. So I think our program was working great until HUD came in and said, listen, we're concerned about your ability to obligate. And if you look at a period of about two months, then we went out and bought a number of speculative homes. I would rather not be in a spec homes. You have the carry cost, utility cost, you got to keep snow removed, there are a lot of issues that go with that.
Now, you said that an end buyer comes to Southfield Growth Corporation. How are they made aware that?
Oh, Internet, a lot of the realtors know, we've done outreach to bankers, to realtors, we've had multiple sessions with that. Now, our strategy's going to change a little bit because we're going to be more focused on completing the renovation of these speculative homes and then getting them into the market. So it won't be a realtor showing homes and saying, hey, maybe you should talk the NSP folks. We'll be marketing these homes to our realtors and such and asking them to help find families who are income-eligible.
My main concern, again, and I voiced it a couple of weeks ago, is that the individuals that are placed in these homes, the homeowners, that we give them some sort of framework and guidelines on what our standards are for the neighborhood. There is no common sense what our requirements are, you know. Just keeping the home deal going above and below, thank you.
Thank you. Thanks. How many homes have you been able to handle and kind of through the process at one time? How many of your staff been able to, you know, just kind of at one time? It's not one and then one and then one and then one?
At one point, there were probably fifteen. There was a period where it was out of control. I mean, giving our existing staffing and, you know, HUD is that hire more people, and we've said, listen, where this city's at financially, we can't do that. But that's part of also the reason why we are looking for, we've got a subrecipient agreement that's been approved by HUD. I've mentioned that agreement to council in October of two eleven. Well, that's also why we're looking at a number of nonprofit partners, especially as we try to get, we're in a different arena. I know City of Westland, I spoke to their program director on Friday, she's still got eight homes sitting in an idle mode with no potential buyers.
So what's the timeline that you're looking under? When does this program sunset? When does it come to?
One critical deadline is March of twenty thirteen, and Diana, what's NSP Three?
March twenty-fourteen.
Twenty, March twenty-fourteen. But also, though, this is a component of the CDVG program, and it could continue, if the city elected, they could continue to fund the program as a CDVG eligible program.
Okay, so you're fully able, like, you're taking the NSP Three funds for the NSP One program and just trying to draw down until March of?
March of next year.
And you're able, with the homes that we have left in the program, and you said about fifteen at one time, you're able to take the remaining and just kind of run the same program you've been running?
And to the council, we have a bail position. Within our NSP plan, there is the notion that if we can't sell a home, we'll do a lease-to-own or rent-to-own, it could be a rental managed by Oakland County Human Livingston Agency, there's the Oakland House, what is it, Erica, Oakland, Detroit, Kristin's Group, the Oakland County Community Housing Network. They have said that that's something they would be, well, we're not, our staff, our position is to optimize the funds, and I, six months from now, I may start looking at a bail position. You know, maybe we go to Oakland Livingston and say, would you rent this out for us?
Okay. So, that's all.
How is the funding for the staff handled? Is the city just reimbursed because they are city debt?
The answer's yes. The stat, when we do draws, that'll be part of the final accounting. Staff time charged to the NSP One program is Diana Scott's salary, so the city will be made whole on that.
And the other thing is, is there a HUD requirement on the amount of time that a house can stay in the program?
There is the affordability requirements, and that's why we have a second lien on every property. And with those affordability requirements, depending upon what our participation, minimum of ten years, with NSP Three, everything's going to a minimum of fifteen years.
So there is no timeline, once you engage a house at NSP, that there should be timelines for it to be processed?
No, obviously, I'd like to not be in the position of Westland, holding homes, and we are holding homes. That's what the beauty of our first program is, when we had those buyers, those ones moved. I mean, we had someone in the office every day pushing and, and that was good. But we need, I'd rather not be holding those, and.
Open the door, Kevin!
I'm not aware of any guideline that says we got to move it in, you know, a year.
So one, how are we going to do this when we have that? Because we know at one time we put a bid out, or a contract didn't come in. So how are we going to block that out? I mean, how are we going to?
My next step, plan amendment in front of the council, but to the Growth Corporation, is we've got an accounting exercise that we're wrapping up with them. And in the last few weeks, a lot of, all the December thirty-one numbers that come in, we'll be going through that, and then we will, Scott, have we signed those contracts?
Six dollars.
We're looking at Klong and Clarkson.
Correct.
So have those contracts been signed?
The contracts have been signed and come back to us to be signed.
So now it's a notice to proceed from the board? And that'll probably, I, I need to take that to the board, have that dialogue with them, that that'll be the Growth Corporation's decision. My recommendation would be that they proceed.
Mr. Fidler?
Whatever the Southfield Growth Corporation does is very limited with the money that you get and the amount of housing that you fill. What do we do with the larger mass? In other words, these homes are sitting vacant. I don't know what the figure is anymore, but you're going to get, you know, we had that, the ones that were given to us, nine, and there's four coming out due to tax sale. And, you know, when I see the map with your little dots on it, you know, it is such a mammoth problem.
We've added less than one percent of the problem.
But, yeah, that's what my problem is. And we're dealing with that one percent. How do we get a handle on the balance so they don't become a problem in the neighborhoods and communities that we are, that they're in? And I guess protect the values. You know, I just had a home in our subdivision go quad level for fifty-nine thousand dollars and sold six years ago for two hundred and fifty thousand. You know, and the thing, but I followed that one because it interests me on what's happening is Citibank had it, and I happen to know where Citibank had it because I thought somebody was taking the copper out of the house, went over and checked the guy with the truck, and he said, oh, he was just making sure that it's secure and the water's off the net. Now it comes where, in two days, I see, a weekend, I see people going through the house, and it's investors. And there had been no notification that this was even for sale. And all of a sudden, on Monday, it's three days, at noon, they closed the bidding on the house. And the house is still vacant. Now, I don't know how long it's going to take to fulfill the mortgage commitment or get a mortgage, but, you know, all these things are happening, you're packaging them, the news that people are going, I don't know if we have a handle on the rentals of them because that's the new business that everybody's getting into. And then I picked up the lumber report, and now the federal government is, instead of what we are saying lease-to-own, it's the opposite, own-to-lease. And the federal programs are going to start giving money in that direction. And so the investor is already going into that practice, but I'm just trying to figure out, how do we get a handle on all this in this community? Because I think it's getting worse. Because every time I, and not only that, but some of the houses that, that we, I don't even know who owns them, I think we own this one, it's neglected, and it's on Virginia. And every time I look at it, the garage door is not even closed all the way, it's slanted, you know, and the guy across the street, one home beautiful, you know, and he's got to look at that house across the street. And I know that, you know, we're talking tonight about your program and what you're doing with your program. But I think that, that we've really got to come up with some kind of a citywide plan on what's happening with these investors, if we got a handle on these investors, if they are renting them out and bleeding them. And what was surprising also to me was, a guy buys a house for fifty-nine thousand dollars, and I don't know, and I don't know what he's going to sell it for, but the neighborhood, the island homes are like a hundred and four thousand. The guy can't come out. So what's he going to do with a house? The taxes on the house are four thousand dollars a year. So even as an investor, you're going to pay four thousand dollars a year, you're going to have to put money up to a standard so they can be sold or rented. If it's rented, I'd like to get a handle on who's renting it and getting it registered. But I'm saying all these things because buying a home today, you know, rehabbing it exceeds the value. And so why put money into a house that we put on the market? Why don't we use the money in some other manner which would, would somehow get these people who are buying up by block to buy these houses and let them manage it and then ride herd on them? Because there'll be rentals, and rentals we can control, housing rentals. I mean, we have to come up with some kind of a new deal here. We just have to lift this thing because, and we have probably about sixteen hundred vacant homes or more.
And that's two thousand and eight, it's just under five thousand homes. Council should not diminish what you've done in the adoption of the Certificate of Compliance ordinance. Any home that's vacant, or any home that's vacant foreclosed, has to get a C of O. That will be a long window. Even when the foreclosure crisis is done, we will probably still be finding properties that we know were vacant, foreclosed, and never got a C of O. We will have the legal right to get that C of O.
Yeah, but who's monitoring that?
The building department is, and I can tell you by the complaints.
By the amount of dots that you have on a map, there's no way on earth. I mean, I know a house next door to me, and the guy rented it for two years, his kids lived at Southfield later, and nobody even knew, he was never registered.
We still have the right to catch those, that ordinance is working.
No, I understand that.
It's working.
I'm not arguing with you.
The number of complaints we get.
I just know that people are not turning them in, people are in the same business as the ones, they're not going to turn it in. There's realtors who are out there buying homes in groups for guys who have capital, and I mean, if.
And we'll be able to come back at them at any time, the way that ordinance is written.
I understand that, Fred.
And last?
I'm not doubting you.
Last Thursday, Neighborhood Service Committee.
Let me be honest with you, but I'm saying is, you know, you catch them if you can.
Right.
And people are not turning them in.
And we'll be catching them a long time after that, because those homes all have to have a certificate of compliance. Last Thursday, Neighborhood Service Committee meeting, this item came up, and the people are being prosecuted, there were people being charged a thousand dollars for not, for failing to get that, and the judges are supporting that. So, and I think it's important, yes, there's more that we can do, but that philosophically was a huge shift for this city. This was a city that was hands-off, very market, market-driven, we don't go in and do inspections. And your response to the foreclosure crisis was to put that in. That's very unique. I mean, a lot of cities are still hands-off, don't want to touch it. You at least put something in place.
We had a plan in nineteen ninety-five on the housing issue here in Southfield. And here we are, two thousand and twelve, and we still haven't had a comprehensive plan on how we're going to deal with all these proportions.
In ninety-five?
Would you be glad I'd picked up all this garbage?
I, 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 I will say.
Jim laughed at me, but anyway.
I think we know, and the building department continues to work on the rental ordinance.
Should have been around some more.
I firmly believe we would need a land banking tool. I'm of the opinion that the Southfield nonprofit, the owner of the McDow, is sitting on one point six million dollars if you count, they should be coming to the table in light of this foreclosure crisis, and there should be targeted neighborhoods that they look to make acquisition and demolition in. And frankly, they've been working a strategy like that to the neighborhood to the north for the last ten, fifteen years. But maybe there's a few other neighborhoods that, when a property becomes available, we buy it and just clear it out. I like using those funds because they don't have the encumbrances of those HUD funds. You use HUD dollars for acquisition and demolition, then you've got these liens being recorded on every piece of property that would need to be dealt with in the future.
Yeah, well, yeah, that's all I have.
Okay, I want to take on, take off from where Mr. Fidler talked, on the for rent homes. If we happen to become aware of a for rent home, see a sign out front, or for a guy around, see a sign out front, who do we recruit, just so they can verify whether?
Uh, Lorna, what's Lorna's last name?
Bolwer.
Bolwer?
Bolwer.
And then, Billy, perfect. Her, Connie May, Carrie Cummingsher. When I'm aware of them, I call, I usually just call Carrie on them.
Okay, all right. That's one. The question that I originally had was, if I recall right, the, when NSP One came out, we had a five-year window to use those funds. If we didn't use all the funds, we had to turn them back at the end of the five years.
That was four. Erica's giving me the four-year.
Four years?
Yes.
Okay.
And actually, there were conflicts in some of HUD's documents that did say five years.
Okay. In your presentation, you said we've had over a million dollars of program income?
One point two.
Okay. Does that constitute the money that we have to return to the federal government?
No, it'll. No, it, it'll-
We don't return that back?
It'll play forward, but as a, if someone sells their home and the mortgage is paid back, it would go back to HUD. Uh, so if, if I received direct homeownership assistance of ten thousand dollars, and I was a moderate to middle income upon sale of my home, uh, five years from now, that money would have to come back to the city of Southfield and then we return to HUD.
Okay, but the program income, if we don't reinvest it in new homes and stuff-
It would go back to HUD.
That would, that does go back?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so it behooves us to continue to find homes that we can either purchase or, or, and resell during this? Because is it two thousand and thirteen, the, uh, window, one window closes on?
That's correct.
Uh, NSP one?
Yes.
Okay, and two thousand and fourteen on NSP three?
Yes.
Now, the other question is, uh, you say that the NSP program is, uh, part of the CDVG, but they're not co-megal dollars, or they are or not?
Uh, we're accounting for those dollars separately. Um, Eric, could you want to, can you answer that?
Uh, they do share a, a bank account, but we keep track of NSP separately. So at the, at the present, um, there, there is funding that, uh, CDVG owes NSP money simply because NSP spends, um, on a more regular basis and we're able to spend that money. Um, CDVG, I only can draw three or four times a year. So it all goes in that one pot, but we keep track of them, so.
Um, have we, do we have the final figure for the, uh, CDVG for two thousand and twelve, two thousand and fifteen? Or two thousand, yeah, two thousand and twelve?
We do have that final figure, I don't have it, it's like four oh seven, I, I, I don't wanna, I, I know it went down from, from this year. It's right around four oh seven or four oh eight entitlement.
I know that, uh, at the federal level, they were reducing the CDVG funding by twelve percent.
Yes.
Did that hit us on a twelve percent basis?
Yes, it did.
So everything went down twelve percent, so the, uh, the money that we're gonna have to allocate to the things that we allocate is a lot less, uh, this year than, than before. Now, the eight hundred and ten thousand dollars that, uh, was set aside for the low-income families, does that eight hundred and ten thousand dollars, is part of that eight hundred and ten thousand dollars used to purchase the property and re-repurse the property?
Yes, sir.
So there's significantly less money to, to provide to the low or low-income folks that don't pay much, or, so that all?
No, actually, the, uh, fifty percent group under our direct homeownership assistance is thirty percent. Diane, help me out, uh, thirty percent of the purchase price not to exceed twenty thousand?
Right, for low income.
For low income. So our direct homeownership assistance is normally ten thousand per, uh, for, uh, for low to moderate or moderate to middle income. But if you're below that fifty percent group, it goes to thirty, thirty percent of the purchase price not to exceed, um, twenty thousand. So we, and that was kinda how, what we did to help low-income families more.
Okay, uh, are we, uh, pretty well exhausting that eight hundred and ten thousand dollars or?
No, actually, that's the, I, I think that's, that's our toughest bucket of money to spend out of.
So we're, we're, uh, providing homes more for middle-income?
Absolutely, yep.
Rather than, than the lower income?
Yeah, I, it's probably evenly split between the low to moderate to the moderate to middle. But that low-income group is the toughest, that's why we're turning to Habitat and, uh, looking to talk to Oakland Housing, uh, Community Network and some of these other groups. Because that's the toughest group to make homeowners.
Okay, are, is, is there any, uh, things in the NSP program that calls for affordable housing? As, as we understand affordable housing, which is the, the strata of, of incomes?
The, the answer is yes, there is. And, um, based on, on, on income, we're providing housing to folks who are low, to low to moderate, and then that moderate to middle.
Yeah, but if we're not finding people to put in those homes, are we? What I don't wanna have is, at the end of the program, somebody that's, uh, an auditor at the other end saying, "Oh, you should've sold more homes to the, to the low to moderate."
Well, that's the, the requirement is minimum twenty-five percent of our grant and our program income must go into that, uh, to assist families who are fifty percent below the area median income.
Okay, so if we're having a hard time finding those folks, uh, should we, uh, kinda ratchet up our, uh?
That's what Habitat for Humanity is about, the Housing Community Network, uh, uh, out of Troy. That's what, that's what those dialogues are about, finding families. Uh, this group, Life Remodel, who was presented to Neighborhood Services last Thursday, we're having a conversation with them as well.
Okay, all right.
In fact, one of the homes, one of our speculative houses, is on that same block.
Oh, is it? Okay. All right, that's, that's it.
Uh, I appreciate you going to Troy and Habitat for Humanity. But could you consider maybe notifying the nonprofits that are in the city and letting them, uh-
Absolutely, Habitat- Absolutely, Habitat will be approaching a number of our faith-based organizations for partnership, as well as this group, Life Remodel. But if there's a church, uh, a faith-based organization or another nonprofit, we're happy to get a dialogue going.
Okay.
Thank you, council.
Hi, everyone, Stephanie English, two-eight-seven-three-five, San Carlos, Southfield, Michigan, four-eight-zero-seven-six. And my email address is sdenglish@sbccglobal.net. Um, I'm here just to, um, kinda go over some of the information I've been trying to push forward from the police department group. I have received back two responses to major FOIA, you know, my, um, big FOIA request. And I do think all of the departments, I have paid my fifty percent discount, uh, fifty percent deposit, uh, which is in-house in the clerk's department, so that I can capture it. Both, uh, reports are quite expensive, uh, they total approximately five hundred and ten dollars. However, I do feel that the, uh, concerns of the police officers is so important that it is worth that expense. I don't like paying it, but I do feel that it's important. I know that, for whatever reason, when I'm coming to the podium, I'm not having any questions answered. But I would like respectfully, through the president and through any of the other council members, to request that once this is completed, that I be granted a meeting, uh, with Mr. Charette, with, um, the city attorney and any other council member that might be interested in this information. I'm uniquely interested in, in Councilwoman Jordan. Um, I was impressed by the fact that you have a background in, uh, EEOC management, which was a very, uh, it piqued my interest there. And you have the appearance of, of being a little reluctant. But I challenge actually going after any reluctant individuals here, because if I can convince the people that are skeptical or reluctant, then I do feel that the position proves itself. I do thank the opportunities that I've had with Mr. Lance, uh, with, uh, Ms., Councilperson Moss, also Councilperson Ken Cyber. But I do know that the crux of this will be the presentation to any persons that are reluctant. Um, some of the information, uh, I guess the most pertinent information that I have pertaining to any embezzlement allegations are, again, putting forward the hard evidence. Um, I do feel that the information, and I will continue to feel very strongly, because, again, I've made a financial commitment to have to print it up and present it. Um, I did come up to City Hall to try to connect with, uh, Councilwoman Jordan, and I hope they're getting the messages to you. But, again, your expertise in that area, um, is, uh, very creditable to me, and I'd like to make that presentation. I'd like to say openly, though, I do respect and I, I very much like our city administrator, Mr. Charette. And I wanna say to him here, eyeball to eyeball, that I do respect you and we've had offline conversations. So it's very important to me that I not have the appearance of trying to shame any individual or leader except for the police chief that I'm alleging these allegations against. I'm sorry that I have to be aggressive with this. Change agents do have to take chances and change agents do have to stand out on a limb, and I'm willing to do that. I, I do hope that I'm making all these presentations pertaining to this chief in a respectful manner, but it is not going to go away. I'm hoping to have a closed-door form to make the presentation, or else I feel that the only other opportunity for me is to, over the next three council meetings, maybe four, list all nine issues that I have direct evidence for and just present it and tell the story within my five minutes at the podium. I would prefer not to do that because, again, it makes it appear that I might be an adversarial person, that I'm adversarial against my city, city management, and I'm not. I am an active citizen, I'm a caring citizen, I'm a taxpayer whose taxes are up to date, whether late or not, they're up to date. I have made the financial commitment in terms of, of capturing this information. I think that I've done my due diligence in, in the respectful manner that a citizen can, and I'm just asking for due process here. I'm asking not to be pushed back, I'm asking to just be treated fairly, although this is an uncomfortable topic. We cannot have any appearance of impropriety in our police department. I wanted to quit this, um, this whole project, you know, just as recently as last Thursday. And there was a lot of hullabaloo from the police officers, because, again, I'm a person, I'm individual, I'm not related to these individuals, and everyone has a whiff of them, what's in it for me? All things that we do have to have, be of mutual, or have a mutual benefit. And because I'm fearful that the city administrators will, and the council members will look down on me for doing this, that I won't have fair access to city services. I won't have access to the ear of the council members because I brought this particular controversial issue up. So I'm hoping that after the FOIA comes back, that I'll be granted that meeting, and I ask that through our president.
Thank you, Stephanie, your time is up.
Do I, is there a way that I can communicate to get the answer? Cause I'm at, and sometimes you do answer citizens that come up here with a question. And I'm asking a question, and I know you guys are just intentionally not answering, but I do need that answer, about a meeting, you know, with this topic, you know, closed-door meeting as a citizen. I'm requesting it as a city service.
We'll discuss that with our city attorney, let him know.
All right.
Yeah, I'm sure. Um, I wanted to ask the indulgence of the council to recognize someone from the audience to, uh, to speak on behalf of the subject that's been proposed once before.
Well, we have several other items still on the agenda.
I understand that, but this is the, the communication section.
Oh, all right, what did, what did you want to?
Uh, I have representatives from the Golden Corral here. And since the last time we met on the Golden Corral, they have convinced me that they have done some adjustments. And, uh, I'm not asking for, uh, rescission of our decision. I'm only asking for an opportunity for them to come and talk to us about what they've done from before to now to give us a, some, uh, basis for discussion, uh, at a future time.
You want them to speak tonight?
Yeah, just for a, a short period of time. And the, and the reason for that is, they have, um, they have invested a fair amount of money in auctions on a piece of property, and they need to know, they have to, they have to get kind of a feel for how we're going to respond to the next thing that comes. Uh, because if, if they get the feeling that we're not interested in, in, uh, hearing their whole story, uh, they have an alternate, uh, they have an alternate plan, that I, I understand they have an alternate plan. And, uh, what'll end up is, we'll still have the traffic problem, but we won't have any revenue. Because the alternate location is very near this location, but in labor village. So what I'd like to, what I'd like to do, what I'm asking tonight, is just to have them come and talk about what they've done in the meantime, to give us a feel for, is it something that we'd like to hear more of? And maybe rescind the decision that we made, so that we wouldn't hear their whole point.
Well, that would be, they can't speak under the communications portion, if you were, I asked them-
Why not?
Because I'm not going to recognize them to speak. If the council, it will take four, take four, the majority of council to recognize them to speak. I am not going to put them on the agenda. If all members of this council want to hear them, they will have to still advise.
I would, uh, support hearing, um-
I would too.
Can you help?
I will, I will, I will still. But I want a limit to the-
Five minutes.
Yeah, five minutes, five minutes. Well, so I, so I'm asking, not asking for any decision tonight, I just want them to have an opportunity to know where do they go from here? Because you heard the, you heard the presentation that Mr. Charette made about the revenue. And if we turn our back, and I'm not saying that we make the decision tonight, but if we turn our back on legitimate people that wanna come in and provide revenue based on some strange individual decision, I think we're, we're not really taking our way through, through a, a situation, a critical situation. And I'm representing, I am not representing Golden Corral. I am representing the citizens that voted for me to come into office to do the best thing that I know how to do for the city of Southfield. And if additional revenue is, uh, possible, I wanna at least hear about it. So I can get as many, uh, facts as I possibly can to make a, make a informed decision by the time it comes time to make the decision. And I just, I just think we're dumb. I have another word, but I'm not gonna use that word. We have, I think it's dumb if we don't at least entertain the time to hear what they've been trying to do.
All right, four members have agreed to have him speak on the communications, they have five minutes. And if you ever come to the court with a question, a name, or address, since this address has a representative, and your five minutes start from the time that she speaks.
Thank you very much, I will not take the five minutes, just to be very brief. And I thank you very much for your consideration and the council's consideration. My name is Rick Ratner, I'm an attorney in Birmingham, Michigan, for, uh, three-eighty Northville Woodbridge, Birmingham, uh, four-eight-zero-zero-nine. I'm here on behalf of Golden Corral for a very simple reason. Uh, this council turned down a potential rezoning so that we could install a Golden Corral on, on Southfield Road. Uh, there was much discussion about it, and there was much, uh, comment from the surrounding neighbors. We have listened to the neighbors, and since that time, we have gone to work very hard on a site plan, which we think answers every single question of the neighbors. Not only that, we've taken the site plan and done some, uh, changed, made some changes to it so that it is extremely safe and a major improvement to the traffic at that particular corner. We are, hopefully, if you will allow us to, planning a meeting with the neighbors after this meeting, if we can in some way know that we can get back on the agenda. I, I talked to council for the city, and one way to do that, of course, is a, is a chance for this, this council to rescind, vote to rescind the decision and give us another chance to come in front of you. With that chance, we hope to be able to give you all, just a chance, all of our information, all of our changes, all of our answers to the neighbors, so that we can install a multimillion-dollar restaurant and, on Southfield Road and do business here. We're very anxious to be in the city of Southfield. It's a fabulous place with this restaurant, and it's a great citizen for this community. We think it'll be a benefit to the health, safety and welfare of the community, and we would hope that you will give us a chance, just a chance, to show you again a modified version, if you will, of that restaurant and the work that we have done. To do that, I would ask council for the city to, uh, clarify the, the way that that might happen even tonight. And it's not to approve it tonight, but it's to give us a chance at some future date, maybe the next meeting of the council, so that we can present the full site plan with a whole presentation, and you're able to get all of the information that may be necessary. that may be necessary. That is our simple question, our, our plea to you, to allow us a chance. I'm here for questions, thank you, that's all I have to say. And by the way, with me is the owner of the restaurant, Mr. Cure Patel, and Mr. Orkin is here, and we are here to answer any questions if you have.
Any questions?
Uh, I would like to have our attorney explain what the process would be if we agreed to bring it back to the, to the council.
Wait a minute, doesn't call for the attorney yet, it calls for the council to enter the general.
I'm only saying that I would like the attorney to explain the process.
We, we know the process.
He doesn't know the process.
I don't, I'm genuinely serious, I, I'm curious, that was a good question that I would have had myself.
You don't know the process?
I just want verification from the city attorney.
You watched the meeting, who are you kidding?
But the, the question is the rescission process, that wasn't discussed at that meeting.
Let the attorney speak.
Go ahead, Mr. Lamont. So, a, a vote was taken that evening, uh, the motion was to approve, um, and as I went through the minutes, uh, it was a six to one vote, and to not approve. So, it, that motion did not pass. To get it back on the table, so that council could then do another public hearing, do whatever it wanted, just to put it back on the table, so that if the issue is alive again, uh, could be undertaken by a motion to rescind. And a motion to rescind would then rescind the vote that basically failed to approve. It's kind of an odd situation that occurred, but i- if that vote was rescinded, we would be back in a position where council had not taken any action on it. So it would be before council, um, again, a public hearing could be done, um, and, um, whatever the petitioner wanted to talk about or anything could be done within that parameters. But your council rules of procedure do, um, provide for a motion to rescind, and, um, if all council members are present, which, um, at least in this case they are, then a majority vote with council would be what would be needed to rescind and place it back on the table.
What was the vote to rezone? The vote was what to rezone?
It was a motion right to rezone the property, and that failed, that failed to be approved.
I have a question on top of that. Would it have to have been, I mean, a naysay voter, do they have to be someone specifically at the meeting?
No, that, you're thinking of a motion for reconsideration?
Yeah.
Uh, and that is a whole different beast than, than that, yeah, we're, we're into a motion to rescind which does not require that.
Mr. Lamont, please, is that prejudice or predisaction?
Uh, it would not, particularly if, if a new public hearing, and my recommendation was if we were inclined to, to do this, that a new public hearing be done, and that anybody that wanted to speak, we, we go through the whole process, um, so that, you know, there is, there is sufficient, um, evidence-
You can't try and go through a six hour hearing?
I, I honestly, I think that, that is the remedy here.
I don't appreciate that.
That is the remedy, is to, is to allow council now to, you know, again, hear, hear all the parameters. Apparently there's been some discussion about changes in traffic pattern or something on the site, so I think a public hearing would be.
Um, I was now on council at the time, the vote was taken, however, I did watch the meeting on TV, and, um, Mr. Fraser, you indicated that it's just dumb not to consider, um, the Golden Corral, and I, I can't think of things to that.
I said no, it's dumb not to consider reven- revenue.
Revenue, dumb not to consider-
New revenue, yes.
New revenue, yes, you did say that. But I guess my issue is, sitting at this table, you have to take a look at each, each item that's before, um, and just because it may bring revenue, I think we've got, in my, I should just speak to me, I have to look at the full impact of that revenue coming to the city, what type of people it, it's, it's gonna draw, is it the right location? And I'm just not, at this point, would I be interested in entertaining bringing it back again? I would not vote, um, in favor of it, I just don't think the Golden Corral is great for that, uh, that part of the city. I know Laker Village would then benefit from the taxes if they're looking at that. But I just don't think, uh, for me, I would be interested in reconsidering it and having it come back to the table.
Okay, since the remarks were meant directly, were made directly to me, I'm only saying, and I agree with you, I wouldn't, I don't think that carte blanche, we agree to anything that brings money in, but I do, I strongly believe that we ought to at least give, uh, decent and, uh, genuine hearing to anyone that wants to do business in the city of Southfield, and then we take a vote on whether it's something that we want to do or not.
But I mean, the vote was already taken with the previous council, I mean, almost undo everything else that was already put in place, I, I'm, I'm not gonna, I can't see changing it. But I understand that.
Mr. Constance, and then, and then, uh, say this, uh, the, um, the pieces that the city has available for redevelopment, redevelopment are problem pieces. And so I asked, uh, paying director, looking, to look at twelve mile road to thirteen mile road, um, since the boulevard has been postponed to, you know, plant, that we look at, it's not a delaying tactic, it's just that, that, that my road is getting all messed up, it, it does not look like, uh, like it's planned, it looks like whatever comes, comes. And what really got me to think this way while I approached Terry, is we cleared the office building off next to Cracker Barrel, uh, for McDonald's. And, and if you look at that lot today, and you look behind it, you know, you know of a terrific impact that we had and changed entire environment from a wonderful, nice, lovable facility. And, and if these people are felt me, I'm gonna look over the back of the McDonald's roof. And, and, and that, to me, even though I, I voted against McDonald's, but it has kind of reassured me that we really, you know, if we're trying to get people to live here, we, we can't put adverse things in front of them. And to me, between Cracker Barrel, and that's not your business, but, and, and McDonald's sitting there in front of, of this nice development, that's just, that's the only way you can get in, between Cracker Barrel and, and what's gonna be McDonald's, but you look at that today, and it's cleared. It, it tells you that we've got to study these pieces more carefully. And, and not only that, but, you know, we look at mile roads, we look about landscaping. If they're not gonna do a boulevard, then we should look at a landscaping plan for Southfield Road from later up to our city limits. They dressed it up somehow, and did some kind of continuity with all these zoning. And we got Burger King, and we got Office, and then we got, we got Target, and then we got this, and then we got that, and, and, I mean, and you got a, a bank that's closed, and you got a shopping center, and, I mean, then you got condos, the real nice dwellings. And, and to me, then we go ahead with the trailer park, we go, we're gonna clean up Southfield Road, and, and we make everybody put brick and nice walls, and protect it from the commercial. And, and, to me, it looks like somebody didn't know what they're doing. And, and now, since this has come up, now you have a lot of rumors coming out that Walmart is gonna come in with a petition for St. Beat's business. So, so what kind of impact is that gonna have? I mean, then you got a major twelve mile road, Southfield intersection, there's high traffic, large accident corner, and you got thirteen miles, and, and Southfield has also a high accident, uh, intersection, and everything between it is, I suppose. And, and so, I personally am not in any way ready to move on anything that would have any kind of impact on that mile at this time, unless I know what's gonna be planned to clean up the whole doggone, they had an office building there, it caught on fire, it was, it was not adverse to the neighborhood, uh, and now we're going to do something that will be different as far as impact, regardless of what it is. And, and I, and I just, personally, am not ready to, to move on it, and that's my strong feeling. And I think we got away from planning by, uh, you know, you just put whatever you want.
Mr. Lamont?
Yes. There are thirty-one small restaurants on Southfield Road, right off Southfield Road, going close to thirteen mile and below. You talk about revenues, you're going to eliminate thirty-one small businesses. I'm not ready to do that. And you're going to eliminate close to two hundred jobs, that's what's gonna happen. You may not believe it, that's what's gonna happen, and that's what Golden Corral is going to do, just by the size and what they sell, in, oh, lots of, lots of reasons. And I'm not ready to destroy all the small businesses around here, not ready, not now. So, you know my feeling. I'd rather have the small business here for them to grow than hire more people, which they will, but if the other thing happens, uh-uh, we're gonna have empty stores, it'll be a ghost town. And that's besides the traffic and the, and the police, security, oh, many, many reasons. We don't have enough police officers right now to protect us, what's gonna happen when the twelve thousand square foot restaurants that we live there, and how many people are going to come in there, the traffic? What happened to Red Lobster? What happened to State Farm? What's happening now to Colas Altar? What's happening to all the restaurants that we had? They're gone.
Nicole's there, I can't ever find the parking place where I go there.
Right, right, but he's having trouble. He's having trouble. People are coming into him, eating, they finish their meal, then they get up and scream, the food's just so good, they refuse to pay, they refuse to tip. That's what's happening. The little guy is at wits end. What can he do? Nothing. He calls the police, he can't find the place there when they, when they're called, because of a minor infraction, people don't wanna pay their bill. But anyway, that's besides the point. I don't want to see thirty-one small businesses go out of business, and lose all the revenue that we're making from the close to two hundred employees that they have.
Yeah, I mean, it looks like this is going in one direction, so I'll be really short and brief, but, you know, I did, I watched the September meeting, uh, my question was actually on the process earlier, not necessarily what was discussed at that meeting, but, uh, you know, you, I watched it for hours, as, as, as there was litany of complaints and complaints and complaints against the project. And, and it just sounds like they've made a good faith effort, I didn't know that, um, Mr. Fraser isn't gonna recognize them, there's a good faith effort to address some serious issues that was with the project, and if they're wanting to come back and present that, I'd like, I, you know, I wanna give them that fair shake, you know, if there's, if we reach a point where, you know, they can't make any more concessions on their end, they can't modify their plan, then it's, the puzzle pieces don't fit together. But they're right now chiseling those puzzle pieces to fit, from what was discussed at that meeting. So, I mean, if, if, if you come into this and still aren't pleased, then by all means, you know, don't support it, but they, it, it, it doesn't seem like it's the exact same plan. They wouldn't, they wouldn't wanna go through another meeting like that, you know, where they, where they're coming through it and we're just beating them down, uh, for another couple hours. Um, they make, are, seems like they're making a good faith effort to work with the city, to take notes from what happened, to work with the residents, um, and just wanna re-present the plan. So I think they're worth, it's worth a fair hearing at least, uh, even if you wanna vote no, um, because you have your own prerogative, which is perfectly fine.
Did you hear what I said? Don't you believe what I said?
I, I heard you, Mr. Lance, I, I'm just saying that they have, they have amended-
Who convinced you, and who called you to bring it up tonight?
I didn't bring it up, I didn't call them up.
Fraser, who called, I don't wanna get into that, sorry. Okay. I don't want it, for the reasons I gave.
I understand.
I can give you ten more reasons why it'll hurt the city, but I'll stop here.
Okay.
Well, I'm gonna add something that I remember from that meeting, uh, because the big boy, there were a lot of restaurant people that came in, and civilians, a lot of restaurants, plus a lot of their employees from all over the state of Michigan, that told us how wonderful the people are. But the thing that I remember, the big boy restaurant people told us, that Golden Corral people came in with applicant, employment applications for the big boy employees, and told them to fill that out, because when they came in, they were gonna put big boy out of business. So, they made their decision rather clear. I personally am not, um, I just don't think it's right for that area, there's, I think there's land on eight mile road that would be, maybe they wanna look at, I, I can't pull up at that area, I'm just gonna get that right up on, on.
It, it appears the council has made their decision, but I just want to put a couple things on the table. Um, we don't have a long line of restaurants knocking on our door, we have tried to recruit them, um, we cannot manage competition. I understand what you're saying, Mr. Lance, like, we get competing-
It's not managing competition.
We, we get competing businesses all the time, and we approve them, uh, because-
That's saving our city, that has nothing to do with competition, you know, I know.
But we have, we have vacant land, um, and we could have a chance to get some revenue. And I, it, it concerns me that, um, we use the data that was presented, and the voice of the, the resident to, I think, to deny them, because this council does not deny development based on liking a product, that's not our role, it is to make sure the zoning is correct, they meet the rules, and if they can acquire the property, that's the role of the council. But when we get into our personal likes and dislikes, that's a whole nother area or lane we shouldn't be in. Um, but it is, it is an opportunity, I heard the residents, and they had some concerns, and if, and if the petitioner has the ability to address those concerns, and those same residents, and those same residents are satisfied, and then this development could be built, it seems like that would be a win-win for the community, but we won't ever have that chance. And, you know, it's interesting, I remember sitting through that seven eleven debate that we had that was on eleven mile and East Road, and we were up all night, they had residential pharmacy hills, and everybody was telling us how that was gonna destroy their neighborhood, it was a quiet neighborhood, and we have not had one ounce of problems from that, so same residents, you know, that's a-
You had a lot of them already over there.
The same residents used that facility, and then they were coming out.
See what the truth is, they've had holdups, see? Okay, so, don't use that as an example, the trade is going to court.
But the same, but the same residents at another time told me that they did not realize how convenient it was for that community. And so it is, um, it is a, there is always that excitement, and so it, one of the things that we're gonna deal with in this city, and we're hearing it, is that we're gonna have to demolish buildings throughout this city, because they're becoming, they're, they're older, they have asbestos, and in the prime days, when you demolish a building, and it was vacant land, someone immediately came in and wanted to build on it, we can continue to have vacant lots throughout this city, or we're gonna have to start looking at being, um, committed to bringing development here. And my biggest concern about no, I don't like it, is that the word gets out, and this is gonna become the community of no, and that you have, it's so hard to do business in the city of Southfield. I think we should have our standards, but to just deny the opportunity to look at a new plan, you may still wanna say no, which is the council's prerogative, and I respect that and I understand that, but to deny the opportunity, 'cause what if, what if this is presented, and the residents think, we're okay with it now, and you can go ahead and build it, then what would be our reason, other than we don't want a Golden Corral? And is that- And is that the role of council? Is to dictate the actual store or the restaurant that is coming. We don't like what you're gonna serve, so we're gonna deny your use. So, I, I just, I don't eat at Golden Corral, and I still haven't gone to one, but I can tell you, I was bombarded with people. They just love it, and it's a diverse use of restaurants. We don't have other restaurants knocking on our door. And it's a way of bringing people into this community. When people come to your community, they, they like it, and they want to live in it, and they want to, if they're there, I mean, wait, maybe they'll go over to the shopping mall that's right next door and spend money. Sometimes when people don't, they have to wait, they'll go to the big boy. I've done that. I've gone to restaurants I wanted to go to, the line was too long, so I went to the neighboring restaurant. They're gonna bring more traffic into that area for big boy, which is a restaurant I know the owner very well, and I want her to be successful. She, she's an excellent community, um, addition to our community.
Madam Mayor, I also talk to people. And I talk, and I know for sure that I speak to more people than you do. When I go to Sam's, when I go out there, people stop there and talk to me, dozens and dozens and dozens. And I ask them about these type of restaurants there and the little restaurants, and they agree with me. So, you're, you're putting fear into people by your speech.
We're, we're not supposed to be talking directly to each other.
What?
We're not supposed to be talking directly to each other, just to be talking to the public.
We should, we should talk directly.
Oh, we can't, we're not-
We can't? I'm talking, I'm talking to the tenants. So, you just heard what I said. I'm talking, I'm talking to the residents here. I'm talking to myself. But I talk to a lot of people out there, a lot of constituents. I get three, four calls a day, with people with trouble, and I solve their problems. And look, well, I'm, I'm not for it, and I don't, and I'm telling you, I'm not for it.
I think both people are spending a lot of their pay by paying the tax.
I don't know if they, they, we just, we sit in action without going through all intent?
Well, we should be moving on to the next item.
Actually, we should be moving on to the next item.
We should be moving on to the next item. We're taking a lot of time on this, and we've got other-
It's only supposed to be five minutes.
Well, he's had five minutes, the rest of us have a lot more time.
Exactly.
He's had a little bit.
Let's move on.
All right, um, so, we'll go on to the next item. Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you for your time.
All right, the next, uh, item is-
So, yes, you have, uh, Larry Bird's representation. So, we're very pleased, uh, to announce the success of the grant application back in September, uh, fall of two thousand and eleven for improved lifesaving, uh, emergency equipment. Eighty twenty match, uh, the amount of the total cost is a hundred seventy nine thousand. Eighty percent, uh, one hundred forty three thousand two hundred, um, has been approved by the grant, and there are funds available within the Equipment Replacing Fund, plus thirty-five thousand eight hundred in matching grants. Um, uh, what we're talking about is improved, uh, EKG and automatic external defibrillators. We have expertise, experts here to, uh, provide further information. Uh, but what we're going to be asking for is a couple of things. We're gonna be asking for Rule Ten, and the reason for it is the best reason I can think of, and that is that this is lifesaving equipment, and if you could get it, uh, within our possession even, even a day earlier, recommend it, and if you have any questions, uh, the expertise is here. Acting Chief Rowley did introduce, uh, uh-
Good evening, Rose, what you have there, would you?
Uh, Madam President, Council, Madam Mayor, Madam Clerk, Mr. Sharet, and residents. My name is Keith Rowley, for, for most of you, uh, most of you know me, but I'm one of the acting chiefs here in the Fire Department. Uh, and to my right is firefighter paramedic Ken Wheaton, and to his right is Captain Tom Columbo. Captain Columbo is our EMS coordinator, uh, he runs the paramedic program. And, uh, if I could publicly, I'd like to, uh, talk a little bit about Ken Wheaton just for a minute. It won't take very long. Uh, Ken has been instrumental in, uh, grant writing for us here in the department. Uh, he's been successfully, uh, writing, uh, grants, uh, for the past couple of years. And he has, uh, brought in, uh, two million, two hundred and thirty-nine thousand, four hundred and ninety-eight dollars present at the end of the community. Uh, and he, much of the work that he does, he does on his own time. Uh, very little of it is done, uh, while he's on, on the job, just because we're so busy, he doesn't have time to do it. Uh, he spends countless hours at home, uh, two new babies, and, uh, he's just one of your dedicated firefighters that, that knows the value in, in writing these grants and bringing money into the community. So, they are the expertise. Uh, if you have questions on the grant, uh, itself, uh, Ken will be able to answer that for you, and also on the equipment, and Captain Columbo will be able to answer, uh, any questions on the equipment also.
There was one element that was deferred, if you could give some detail on that. It's the, uh, compression systems, the contact-
Yeah, it's, um, we, we put in, uh, for three different items. Uh, EKG monitored defibrillators to replace equipment that we already have that's quite old. Now, I think, I believe it's twelve years old and outdated. Uh, and technology advances so quickly in this area. Uh, let, uh, Ken and Tom talk about the advances in the technology. And then, uh, uh, our automatic external defibrillators, um, uh, are, uh, a little defibrillator that, uh, the community is taught how to use. Uh, actually, we had, uh, lifesaving here in the city, in the clerk's office. We had, uh, one of our employees, one of the employees go down, uh, was in cardiac arrest. Uh, these automatic external defibrillators were applied to her, and, uh, she's with us today because of those defibrillators. So, uh, they're very valuable. Uh, these defibrillators will be put on our engines. If our engine is out in the community and, uh, a call comes in and they beat the, uh, life truck there, uh, they, they have, uh, these AEDs they're called, and they can apply those to the patient quickly. Uh, the third item was chest compression devices. These, uh, are devices, when you're doing CPR, it's very labor intensive. Uh, technology is advanced, so they've, they've actually developed a machine now, and I'll let Ken talk a little more about this. They can actually do the compressions. It's, it, it's a much safer way to do compressions, it's more efficient, and you don't have to have a, an, a, a paramedic standing up while an ambulance is going down the street, leaning over the patient unbuckled, uh, which is very dangerous. Uh, I don't know how many times I had my head thrown into the, uh, the shelves on the other side when that ambulance turned because you're not strapped in. Uh, so, this, this device would, would take the place of one man. Uh, what's happened is there's some literature that's come out to FEMA that disputes its efficiency, so FEMA's put that, uh, item on hold until, uh, further, uh, research is done on it. So, that was one of our items that, uh, we may get in the future, but that money is, those monies are on hold right now. But if you have any questions on the, on the grant itself, or, or further questions on the technical end, because Ken is very, uh, educated on the, on the technical end of, of both the, uh, the new technology in our EKG monitors and on the AEDs. So, I'll turn, I'll turn the mic over to these two gentlemen, and they can give you a little bit of update on that.
Hi. I guess I'll just take any question that you have about the equipment. Um, I'm really excited to have this equipment. I've got, um, a little over twelve years on the job now, and I remember getting the Life Pac fifteen or twelve that we currently have, as well as the AED shortly after I hired on. And they definitely exceeded their lifespan. The average lifespan for the equipment that we're replacing successfully with this grant is eight to ten years. We're at twelve, working on thirteen years right now. So, um, it's got a lot of really good technology that's gonna enhance our capabilities of successfully resuscitating patients. And I've been a proud member of the teams here, um, rescue crew, the engine crews, and have been part of successful resuscitation, and that is what my goal is whenever I'm taking care of a patient, is to see them discharged from the hospital five, six, seven, ten, twelve days later, whatever it is, neurologically intact, and there's nothing, um, that gives me more joy than that. This equipment is gonna enhance our capability to do that. So, I guess I'll just take any questions, like any specifics that you have about the equipment.
Um, Ken, I, or Keith, I wondered, um, and maybe you've already answered this, but, um, these are still functioning, um, defibrillators. Uh, I was wondering if they could be used someplace else? Uh, they still have life, and-
They do.
Um, you know, I guess-
According to the, as far as for their value, they are considered fully depreciated. However, they still have a lot of value to us. Now, we could put them on our engines, it's something we've wanted to do for a long time. As you know, our engines go on medical runs, and we need that because just today, if you ever listen to the radios, about once a day, all four life units are out of service. So, we rely on the engines to do a lot of backup, or we actually be in first responders on the scene, until one of the life units gets cleared, or we have to get private ambulance in here. So, what we'd like to do is take the old monitors and put them on the engines. Because on the engines, on any given day, I usually have at least one paramedic, and oftentimes I still have two paramedics on the engine, so they could use those as a stopgap until the life unit gets there. That would be what we're hoping to do.
Good. Thank you.
Mr. Fraser.
Uh-huh. I, uh, read this information, and, um, and as unusual as this may sound, I find that the media need to act. On this.
Second.
We got, we got, we're-
So, what, what did you do?
I, I found that the media need to act.
I understand.
No, go ahead.
Well, after, after the motion's on the floor, there's one more issue we talked about.
We have a motion by Mr. Fraser, supported by Mr. Steyer, to, we have immediate need to act, so we're invoking, invoking Rule Ten. Thank you. Do you guys have a, all favor?
All in favor?
To all in favor.
Aye.
The House?
Madam, Madam Chair, I support the recommendation that was presented to, uh, purchase the new equipment for the Fire Department, for the EMS, uh, and upgrade the equipment.
Motion by Mr. Fraser, supported by Mr. Steyer, to support, uh, and authorize the approval of, uh, purchase of the equipment. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That's, that's, yeah, now it's one week.
That's now, now it's your turn, correct? Mr. Precasi?
You've got it all approved, right?
Well, yes.
I mean, you, I'm sorry, you voted?
We have, yes, yes.
Okay, the comment I have is, in, in the experience that we had with Peggy over there in the clerk's office, no one knew where the paddles were, you know, sitting right behind the, the information desk. Somehow, we've got to have those put somewhere where either there's some light there or something put where there's some kind of electronics, so people can actually see where they're at in case of emergency. Uh, number two is, what?
We, we knew where they were. We knew where-
Oh, they went over to Parks and Rec and got that one?
No, that's not true.
Well, that's what I heard.
Okay, we, we knew where they were, we didn't know how to use them.
Okay, well-
We didn't know how to use them.
Okay, I heard several stories. So, the next point I'm trying to make is, I understand you got a three hour program, and, but a one hour program, I think we should start educating us and, and anybody that's in this building working, you know, uh, either have two half hour sessions at lunchtime, or an hour session after lunchtime to get segments of this building to get trained on how to use it, so they're not timid with it. They know how to grab it, they know what to do with it, and, and, uh, and we are very fortunate in that case that other people knew how to use it. But if it was up to employees of ours, that lady would not be here today.
Uh, through the chair, uh, Mr. Precasi, um, I'll work with Captain Columbo, and we'll, we'll put together some shorter, more frequent programs, uh, repetition with those type of, types of-
And, and that should be mandatory, by the way, I believe. Everybody should be able to save one other's life. If you have the opportunity. What? I didn't have the media motion. He said that he would take care of it, I believe he said that.
Any other comments?
It ought to be part of a first aid class.
That's true. All right, we didn't vote on this, so now it's the time. We didn't vote on it.
We did, yeah.
Yes, you did.
Yes, we did.
Yes, we did.
They're overwhelmed by the-
I guess we're overwhelmed. Normally, you have your discussion before your vote, that's how it's done.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We follow instructions, you send everybody in the favor.
Right, our switcher council, S O L E, related components, cable, and date. Uh, there's another request for Rule Ten for not, uh, a lifesaving or, uh, health, uh, safety in welfare. However, it is for a good purpose, and that is, um, improved communication, uh, real time for, uh, our, uh, council meetings and other events. And also, uh, as an efficiency measure, when this council, uh, switcher mechanism doesn't function, uh, there are a lot of other steps and, uh, inefficient, uh, operations and duplicate, duplicate processes.
Also, Rule Ten, who votes?
Motion by Mr. Precasi, supported by Mr. Lam, to have immediate need to act in both Rule Ten. All in favor?
Aye.
All in favor? Motion, here.
We have, uh, a little-
And then, uh, I, I move that we approve, uh, the letter indicating the purchase of the switch by the cable company.
Support.
Motion by Mr. Precasi, supported by Mr. Lam, supporting the death process.
And what will happen to the visiting's equipment?
Well, she's gonna sell it. Well, uh, it's, it's parts, right? It's in parts, pretty much.
Yes, same way.
Uh, yeah, and, and, and in the resolution, uh, we have the language that says, uh, for first season, it's a disposal of it. I had the same question, and we're hoping for five to ten thousand.
It could be a little bit more if it's a twenty to thirty. But, yeah, we, we're looking to sell it.
Yeah, we, we got twelve years out of the, the ten year, uh, decent equipment, um, and, and maybe someone else can use the parts to keep, keep something going a couple more years. They, they can have the residence.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion, here.
What are you trying to extend to medical marijuana? Medical marijuana. Uh, this is a, another request for Rule Ten. Um, council originally adopted a, uh, moratorium on medical marijuana facilities on July twenty-sixth, two thousand and ten. Um, a lot of planning went into, you know, where they might be appropriate and what kind of setbacks and so forth. Um, and in the midst of all that, um, there have been numerous, um, court cases that are, that have been, uh, processing through the courts. Um, there, at, matter of fact, uh, just last week, the Michigan Supreme Court, um, agreed to hear a case that has implications under this, under this act as well. And so, what, what this body had felt for, uh, at least since July twenty-sixth of two thousand and ten, was that it was appropriate to kind of wait and see, you know, what happened through the courts uh, in terms of, uh, you know, the different plots, we don't whether to allow these or not allow these. Obviously, you'll remember that the, the federal law outlaws marijuana. It is, it is a, classified as a narcotic, and it's outlawed. So, there was a conflict between the federal law and the state of Michigan Initiative law that says for med, for medical purposes, marijuana would be allowed in other certain situations. So, what we're asking, um, is that we extend this, uh, moratorium an additional, um, time, a hundred eighty days, again, six months, trying to see, you know, where we are with these court cases and what, what the, the, the clearest and most, um, efficient way of dealing with medical marijuana is. And hopefully, within that time, maybe we'll get some pronouncement from the Michigan Supreme Court, and that would be wonderful in guiding us, so.
Move of Rule Ten. Support.
Motion by Mr. Steyer, supported by Mr. Jordan, to invoke the Rule Ten. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
All in favor? Motion, Chair.
I, um, move the proposed extension on the medical marijuana facilities moratorium for another 130 days.
Motion by Mr. Steyer, supported by Mr. Jordan, to extend the, um, moratorium for another 130 days. All in favor?
Aye.
All in favor? Motion, Chair.
Other items?
You have something else to mention?
Yeah, I, um, one old item, and regarding a letter we received, as well as the letter that's in our packet this week. I did respond to the person who...
Who was there?
Wrote a, I'll get there. Uh, who wrote about the, um, missing jigsaw puzzle at McDonald Towers. Someone looked up that letter from Mar, then the clown? Yeah. Anyhow, no one knows what happened. The lights have been repaired, and water has been put down the drains to stop the gas. And they can do jigsaw puzzles in the library, in case anybody wants to know. Then we received another letter, and I know that sometimes the city administration doesn't get these letters, so it was from Mrs. Bates in Green Dalton, next to the Charter School, with a lengthy list of disturbing the peace complaints. And I'm just bringing it up only to make sure that it doesn't get lost. I don't know, Jim, or...
I am aware, I am aware of the letter, like the working council, that we will have a task force to address it. Busy with, uh, preparing the, the preview of the budget. And we will aggressively address it. Um, it's, there, there've been problems there before, and we need to, we need to pay a visit to the folks that are running that institution. We, we made some progress before, now there are new, new persons in charge, and we will pay them a visit, in the event.
I wanted to comment on that, I was also, I was gonna bring it up. You know, we had the, the vulnerable buildings and condos next to the palace, and we really went to the wall to, to stop any actions there involved, noises, cars, and everything else. I could see where they really have a situation there because of the loaning, letting it out to a facility that isn't at a school, I think it's a religious school. But they have, you know, different kinds of programs, a boot and all this, and, and they come out, right on the side of the residence, and the driveway is right on the residence side.
The property one.
Yeah. And so, so, and they're gonna have to adhere to, to, I guess, respecting neighbors, or somehow we're gonna have to restrict the use of those buildings, because, I mean, I, it has been an, an issue that's come up many times. We've sat with the people in that neighborhood, we've sat with the ministry here, the school, Davis's home, and this, and that, I don't even think we do it anymore.
No.
But, but this thing is just way out of hand, and, and it's, it's, it's a terrible thing when you can't, you know, can't search your own home, and you can't go to sleep at night, for the rest, and, and, and you're, and you can't tell your home if it's underwater, you know, and so you have to mercy on whatever you're living with, the environment. And the part I consider is that they have to be closed up, if they didn't make the noise. I mean, they need to be, make targets in the annoyance, in the arx of the neighbors.
Madam Chair. Through the chair, to the city administrator, because that is my neighborhood, if it's already addressed the council, I would like to be involved in whatever task force, because I do get visited by some of the neighbors, like that.
Great, love to have you.
Great.
I am, you're elected.
Great.
I am, you're elected.
I, yes. Yeah, I was elected before I got here tonight. To be frank.
And Jim, before, you know, uh, when you, when you get somebody doing their homework, I mean, I'd like to know how many times you called the police department, what did you swear to?
I, I think, I don't think we're gonna do more of the same this time. We need some, we need a new approach. And we're going to, we're going to do what, what we're doing, uh, in Mr. Lance's apartments where he, where he lives, get the task force, okay? Because there's a plan later, okay, not in the news, okay? And I'll tell you, when we get done with, with the approach there, things will improve. We, we've identified the causes of the problem, uh, and by bizarre, we've done some improvement, and they'll be more improved, so that's the kind of approach we need to take. We need to do some, we need a new approach there.
I have not talked with the principal that's, that's at Rapid Academy, and I think he'll be very responsive to whatever we come up with, to see if he can be a good neighbor.
I've got a couple of things. I was looking at the planning department activity report, and this is for November. And it shows that the Miracle Bowl field is going to be building a concession field. I remember years ago, when I was on council, we originally approved the Miracle Field, um, is that we would have the country net build the concession stand, and they'd do something jointly, so that we could get part of those, that revenue. I'm not sure where this is in the process, but I distinctly remember that being a very critical part of it.
Well, I almost failed at a non-council meeting.
Yeah. But we're not, we're not, we're not, well, I think we've got, I wouldn't let that add in.
I, I actually remember that, because that was an open issue in that agreement that was drafted, that if and when it, they wanted to install a concession building, that it would have to come back and have council approval. To my knowledge, it never came back, so I don't know whether that, I mean, this is just for site plan review, but in terms of now operating that, I believe under that agreement, they still have to have council's approval, so we'll take a look at that. Definitely take a look at that.
The change has got to be made aware of that.
Well, again, from a zoning perspective, I understand what he's doing from the site plan issue, but in terms of them actually opening and operating that, that was an open issue under the, the, the agreement, so...
You talked about shares, didn't you?
That was one of the items that had never really been defined, and so we just left it. Exactly. We just left it alone, so when you're ready, come on back.
We have been very generous partners, okay?
Yes, we have. So I will pull that out.
And the other thing, um, and I know Terry was here earlier, and there are two items that, um, I would like attention given to, and that's, the first is the Abbey Wine Shop, where they're doing a new building supply. It's taken a long time, and you've got boards at the window, and just how long of a process are we looking at to get that right at Turner South?
Oh, oh, I see.
And then the last issue, again, this is a Terry Crowe issue, is, um, you know, they closed the Wendy at 12 telegraph, and I see that they're going to be opening a hotline chicken.
Yeah.
And, you know, I think we've gotta, again, protect the borders of Southfield, and what type of even fast food we, we put in certain spots. So I don't know if it's too late, if we can do this to come back to the council, if we need to change our rules to make administrative, some administrative issues come back to council, but to have these things put in motion, I think we need to really be concerned about what's happening in the city and the government.
I will put the goal at the whole there.
But, um, I don't know if we need to discuss it with later data, if you want things to come back here before they're given final approval, or...
I thought it was all done.
I don't know if it's all done.
The, the Abbey Wine situation is an appearance issue, and we'll address it immediately, because, um, you know, we, we, we have an expanded concept of code enforcement that also has community appearance in mind. So we'll, we'll coordinate that. I'm not sure exactly where it belongs, but once it's appearance, okay, then we'll, we'll have, hold people look at it, and then we'll coordinate with the, with various, or several of them. So that one we can take, uh, the others, you know, more of a procedural issue at the restaurant.
Just, just a comment on that. Normally, if it's already, if it's an existing use, and it's being used by an existing use, that's why it doesn't come to the faster rush, and like you said, it would be for then every, even though it's known properly. And that's, that's a discussion to have.
I'm assuming, right, site plan was originally approved for Wendy, so it met a site plan requirement, and they would go out, and now the zoning's proper, site plan's been approved, they're just coming in. That's probably exactly why it, in, in this process, as opposed to on the dundo.
I think Terry explained to me that if the same square footage, that if they enlarged it, it...
Right, then it would, then it would come back.
I think he's gonna...
He's got, yeah, 20% or so, right, but beyond that, if he, they want to change the site plan, but, but within those limitations.
But he can't, they can't go down, and, they can't reduce it, okay, without going backwards.
Well, the...
And that was, with the staff and go, we changed that rule.
But I'm wondering, this one, as far as I understand, they just left it exactly the same.
Yeah, that's right.
Yeah, yeah.
But he can't do, he can't do administrative approval if it gets smaller. He can't if it gets bigger, but that...
Yeah, only, but only within that limitation.
Right.
Yeah.
There's also, uh, on, at the, the edge of the Telx Mall, where the, if you recall that, that lady that came in and was gonna start her, her own restaurant, and, and she was gonna sell her house to, was gonna mortgage her house to, and her kids were gonna, uh, it's, it's right around the corner from the Secretary of State's.
Okay, right.
Those, I don't know if they're, if they're remodeling that, or what, but those buildings are boarded up, too.
And exposed to that one, if I call that one out, because it, it's tough for parties to go. I have one thing. One of the things that, that has made South so great has been our strong neighborhood associations in those communities, and we have supported that by having a neighborhood services department, right, right there. As you know, people have, and that, that department now is vacant. We used to stock material, I think stock materials isn't being restocked. And I, I, it's a conversation, I'm not asking to, or recommending that we hire a new employee, but we should get a community person, pay them $10 an hour, or something, or some kind of way, but if our neighborhood association starts to deteriorate, that's our community. And I think that's something we take a lot of pride in, and we need to, we really need to, to check that before, it just, because there's a lot of things. They, they nurture the, the neighborhood associations, try to keep them together so that they can grow. They, um, participate, and, and training, scheduling, and meetings for them. When there's new, um, neighbors that move in, they go to the neighborhood associate, the neighborhood services. I, I used to refer new people, go there and learn all about the community, all the paperwork is there, and now we don't have that. And that's not something I think we should let evaporate. I think it's, it's, it's the fiber of our community, and you'll find any city that is really a strong community, because of those neighborhood associations. And I, I, I just don't want that to go away.
And you just try to volunteer.
Yeah.
We could squeeze out existing resources.
But, of course, we're gonna need the interns that might want to come in.
Yeah, or internships, you know, have many interns go down there and work for hours.
Volunteer right here.
Volunteer right there.
Yeah. We'll take a look. I'm not totally pleased with the gang that's...
You know, that was, it was a really nice touch, because new people, I, new people who weren't even referred would come in and see, uh, and they would walk in, they would be introduced to the city in their turn.
First stop.
We tend our, we get a lot of welcome, uh, neighborhood, come up here, welcome people come up and...
What's happened is, as far as the, 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 any complaints or the person that people have, they still get taken care of, but the positive piece of what you're talking about, and that needs to be, needs to be re-energized.
I talked about, uh, looking at miles of, of the city and, and seeing how we can make them look nicer, and landscaping, whatever it is. Well, you know, this Popeye's reminds me of that telegraph road thing. And here we have Lear World Headquarters there, and they bought Sims, I understand, the expanding, and that thing is still a hodgepodge. I mean, if you go even from 10 mile to 8 mile road, boy, just one, right, I mean, come out, we've come to city, the, the party store, not that I'm against party stores, but there, it's stripped in, doesn't look right, and, and there's land behind it, it's been developed into a nice park of some kind, they wanted me by an industrial park, a light industrial park, but, but we're compromising the, the value of, of the aesthetics of our mileroads. And, and, boy, I'll tell you, I just drive down there, and I go, why would Lear give up those buildings over there in Dearborn, where they had those beautiful buildings standing, they gave away, uh, right nearby, the Ritz, and at this Silverman headquarters? You know, it just doesn't, it doesn't have the appearance of them, and, and it did come to us to make sure that, that it, it can bring others, automotive manufacturing or companies into that area. And I suggested also that we get a, a permit to, to put, uh, sculptures, uh, outdoor art on, on the islands, between telegraph and, and, between 8 mile and the expressway, a guy like Silverman, who had the barn door up there, you know, he loves it, each guy could sponsor an art piece up there, and, and when you go to the airport, you see that little coves, whatever they are, and the turbines turning, I mean, it, it kind of tells you, boy, something's exciting there. When you get into that area from 8 mile coming north, there's nothing exciting about it. But you see, when they, this Christmas really addressed it, they had all the Christmas tree lift, I mean, boy, that was just unbelievable. And, and I thought, one of the things we could do, if we get a permit by the state to do that, and they should, because they asked, they gave us asphalt instead of concrete, they should bend a little bit, and they give it three years going on the plantings of, of low mile down to 11 mile, that we take that, this object was given to us when we had outdoor art sculpture, uh, thing here at City Center, and move that thing over to Lear, light it pedestal, and light that thing, if it's, if somebody who has more, uh, you know, culture than I do, you could, uh, something that really would, you come in, you know, I mean, even those, I think, he used to laugh about those spiders up over in 94, you know, when going to the airport, and we're, we're telegraph road. But you know, you go over there and you see that, it's kind of neat, you say, I'm looking at those, and say, hey, that tells you something, you're somewhere else. And, and we better start looking at that. I know money is tight, but I don't think you need a lot of money to make something look nice and, and, and exciting. And, and what really got me going again on this is that, you know, I did Nick, I had somebody, graphics person, who designed that, it really, I don't know what he ever did with it, uh, but it was an idea, you know, with the flags and everything, when you come in, and, and pieces of artwork in the middle, lit up, and you could do wonders with very little money and donations, and like I said, Silverman would be glad to, to get a piece of art in front of his building. Uh, I, I got a letter from somebody that, from way back, when Joey Elias, John Elias died, uh... I got a letter from somebody from way back when Joey Elias, John Elias died, it was these, when Roy Rogers was over there in Gordon Drive, they planted a tree out in front of the Boulevard, and I looked over there and tried to figure out what kind of tree, because they cut most of them down already, you know? You know, then we used to get, what I said, if we used to get businesses to put plants out there, to put trees out there, you know, and, you know, in the name of somebody, whatever. I mean, we've got to get kind of, thinking out of the box, but the shorter money, the little meaning, you got to stop making. You know, that's it.
I just want to say, I agree. Every time you travel to another city, you see their business area, there's always that art section, you know? Some of them went to the thing where they had the cows on every corner, and they did all that, but it just, it just speaks to the, to the appreciation and the appreciation of art when you have that outdoor art. And normally, you get a partnership with an artist, and you get, you know, them to erect something, and it's usually sponsors, but I think it speaks so much to a community when you see that outdoor art, and our interests is ours, I mean, that's a powerful interest, Telegraph, and I think if we did something, I totally agree with you, it says a lot about a community.
Yeah, Seattle, where they, you know, they would probably get one, Lear would get one, Silverman would get one, Popeye before they get the permission.
Popeye, yeah. Oh, I heard Lear was buying the Sims building.
Yeah, I understand, yeah. It's really like to see that expanded, the outdoor surprise.
They're just been talking, I've heard talking several quarters within the organization about outdoor art, stuff is doing, maybe it's kind of a spirit of moving.
The last time I met with the executive board, they were pointing to the dead trees on that Boulevard, and how they were very annoyed about that. He said, "We've put all this money on landscaping, and why the Boulevard on Telegraph, the dead trees, and here's a multimillion dollar company, and they're concerned about dead trees."
I drive down Telegraph Road north of us, and they got that marble entrance, whatever it is, I see red landscaping trucks in that right away, you know, planting and cutting and everything, and this thing's three years, and they haven't put my sprinklers back on, and, I mean, they didn't take out the old bushes, they took out the nice stuff, not the ugly bushes over there, that overgrown, there's weeds coming up out of them, I mean, I mean, it's unbelievable. I mean, it's embarrassing, you know, it's, we keep, everybody does this to us, and, you know, I get tired of that, you know, I mean, come this guy come up there in Lansing, come down here and look at what this place looks like, but it's...
Or maybe if we let, um, the place up here, the rest...
Oh, well, that's smart.
Yeah.
I want to go back to the mayor's comments about the neighborhood, give him some thoughts over here, and I think it's really turnative, especially, it's like a good ambassador program, where we would get seniors and stuff to come in, wear white gloves, and pants with a bow tie, just something to build up the image of South Hill in a track.
Commonly, it's planned only.
I mean, we can really frame this well, really going to get politicians to come in and take care of their, you know, that's other places throughout the city.
I guess, yes, I do.
Yeah.
Anything else? All right, meeting at the trial.